Minnehaha County Commission Meeting. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, meeting documents are available for review next to Commissioner Hiberger. It's just a reminder to silence your cellphone, which I did, thankfully. And Craig and Carol are here if you need a listening device. So, that takes us to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So, move, Benega?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for June 23rd, 2020.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $833,905.21.
Pay the bills.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair, today's bills include $100,000 for architecture and engineering expenses, $194,000 for metro communications, and actually $60,000 for XL Energy.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item and reports, there are none. Next item, item five, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move, second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item are abatements. There are none. Next item, notices and requests. First item is a motion. Would be to consider a motion to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of request for proposal for construction manager at Risk Services. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This RFP that is requesting your permission to publish is for construction manager at Risk Services for Highway Facility Designing Construction. As you know, the county continues to partner with TEGRA who is serving as the auditor's rep for the process to design and construct the highway facility. And so, we have been meeting, and now is the time that TEGRA is advising us to bring on the contractor for serving as construction manager at Risk. And they will help with the design process in terms of getting a more definitive budget estimate, more schematic design for the facility, as well as help coordinate efforts between the architectural and engineering team as well. And in the end, what I had learned from TEGRA is that CMAR, and as you know, the process is increasingly used around the country to help control budgets for different construction projects. So, as per state law, this RFP is being published for the contractor and will receive the submissions later in July, and then review those, score them, and narrow down a short list for which contractors will be interviewed. I would be happy to answer any other questions you have about this.
Questions for Craig this morning? If not, I'd consider a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to planning and zoning notices. The first item is the first reading and to authorize the auditor to publish notice for the Cedar Ridge Plan Development. Scott, good morning.
Yes, good morning. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And today, I'm asking that you authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for July 21st for a plan development amendment. The applicant is Brad Wagner, who is the developer of the Cedar Ridge Plan Development. Cedar Ridge Plan Development, for those that are not familiar with it, is located approximately two miles north of Renner, right off of Highway 115. And it is a plan development that incorporates residential uses and some ag uses, primarily riding stable and some open spaces. And it was approved about four years ago. The applicant is now asking for an amendment, actually two amendment requests that are in one application. One amendment request is to allow larger accessory buildings, larger than 1,200 square feet. You may recall that a couple of years ago, we modified our county zoning ordinance to allow accessory buildings up to 2,400 square feet. But in their documentation, the guidelines, the requirements for that plan development specifies 1,200.
Aye.
Karski?
So, they want to be able to move that up to 2,400.
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
And secondly, they would like to add six residential dwelling units or residential
Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't want him to rush off, but he reported today that there were no appeals based on the items we had last week.
lots in addition to the 16 that they already have.
So, that included how many animal units at the Woody County area?
So, that is the two requests. I believe there's another 4,000 animal units. As I indicated, I'm asking that you set the hearing date for July 21st, and we would So, it'll go up to 12,000, I believe, now. have the second reading and the discussion with the applicant and whoever else would And that was to get a little bit... They're putting in a methane digester, which is sort of new technology to capture that like to attend the public hearing. This did go to the Planning Commission a week ago yesterday, week ago last night, and gas, and then they'll put it into the natural gas pipeline. it was a split decision. And so, there's a benefit to having more animal units because it makes it, I guess, They recommended approval on the request to allow the larger accessory structures, more cost effective.
All right.
and they recommended denial of the request for the additional six residential building
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, that takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien.
sites. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
There are none. So, this is our opportunity for public comment.
Otherwise, we can set the hearing date and move forward.
If there's anyone here today for public comment, this is your opportunity to speak. Questions for Scott?
Motion to set the hearing date?
Second.
Seeing none. So, motion and a second. It takes us to item 10, which is a resolution. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
We will consider a resolution to transfer property adjacent to Western Sioux Falls, Commissioner Barth?
I just wanted to grab Scott for a second. He sent me an email this morning that...
Minnehaha County, South Dakota, from the Lennox School District 41-4 to the Sioux Falls Are we going to a different issue?
Yes.
Can we take a vote on this one first? School District 45-5.
I just wanted to leave.
Okay. He's on notice now that he doesn't get to leave. Auditor Litz, good morning. All right, so we had a motion and a second.
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office.
Roll call vote, please.
And this morning, I'm bringing with before you a resolution.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Sioux Falls and Lennox School Districts are asking Minnehaha County Commission to approve a resolution establishing that July 1st, 2020, has the effective date of the school district boundary change between the two districts. The property is adjacent to Western Sioux Falls and is moving from Lennox School District to the Sioux Falls School District pursuant to SDCL 13-6-87. The Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, having jurisdiction over the district in which the territory is the next, are required to set the effective date of the boundary change for tax allocation purposes as well as the school district voting purposes. The action requested today is to approve the resolution transporting the property adjacent to Western Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, from the Lennox School District 41-4 to the Sioux Falls School District 49-5, effective July 1st, 2020.
Other questions for Auditor Litz?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I've been asked to make an amendment to the documents we have. In the Exhibit A area where it says, "Where is the legal description of the area proposed for detachment and annexation?", is, I want to, after the words, "After legal description", put the words "as of 2019" inserted into that text.
Motion and a second. A roll call vote, please.
We're just voting on the amendment?
We're just voting on the amendment right now.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. All right, so that would take us... Now, we're considering a motion to move the amended resolution. Did you have a comment or a question, Commissioner Karski?
My understanding is, we get to approve this. We don't have a lot of choice in approving it. And it's an interesting scenario, and school districts transfer lands because the taxes follow the land. They have to by statute. That makes sense, because if you have a bond issue on property and you're counting on the revenues from that property to pay those bonds, it should transfer. But it really kind of muddies the water for a lot of people when they buy property and they're looking at different school districts. I'm paying taxes to this school district, but I belong to that school district, and it goes on for a while. So, it really gets to be a complex issue. So, we really have to trust what the school board has done and the action that they've taken, that the people that are going to be living on these properties are represented fairly on the taxes.
You know, and along those lines, I know we have the In-House Acel Council for the Sioux Falls School District who's here. If I could come forward, if you don't mind, and maybe you could help give us a little context for what our role is here with respect to this action.
Sure. And by way of introduction, I'm Brett Aronson, In-House Council for the Sioux Falls School District. And I would agree with the Commissioner that the responsibility is to set the effective date of the transfer. The resolution has already passed both boards, and certainly trust on the school board, but also the school board is answerable to their orders. And this has passed. There was an opportunity to be heard, a public hearing. There was no petition received to challenge that. And so, now is the time to enter that order to set the effective date. And that's the scheme that the legislature has set up in statute.
Other questions?
If I just...
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for that. You made the comment that, and no opposition, nobody's living there yet until those homes are platted out and people start buying properties and living there, there probably won't be any opposition. But it's just, my comments are buyer beware when you're moving into these areas, that you be fully aware, because I live in an area like this, and there's some people that are, just don't understand what's going on, and why am I paying so much more, why am I paying property taxes in this school district and that school district? You know, it's a complex issue. So, people need to be aware of these things when they build a home.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
You know, I sometimes wonder why we have so many school districts. The state of Tennessee has three more school districts than South Dakota. I bet they have five times as many people, and somehow they get by with 149 school districts than we have 146. It seems someone should work on that.
The other issue that I wanted to just clarify, because in Dropbox for us, we just had the minutes from the Sioux Falls School District, and there was a question about the effective date of when the taxes would be, this change would take place for purposes of taxes. And I think that the Lennox School District clarifies that, that this is beginning for taxes payable in 2021, that this payment is going to switch over, that the Sioux Falls School District will remit the capital outlay taxes. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had that all straightened out, because it is very complicated. And so, I would agree with Commissioner Karski, because sometimes we hear from taxpayers that are concerned about how these taxes are being calculated. And, you know, really, this is an agreement between the school district that we just, the Auditor's Office just allocates the taxes according to that agreement. Really, our only role here is just to set the effective date. Commissioner Barth?
I just want to point out to the public watching that the county commission is not the one that draws the lines for the school districts. We're just approving this exchange between the two districts. We don't draw the lines.
All right. Anything else?
I felt that coming.
All right. With that little bit of excitement, I entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
Move, approve, second.
If a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. All right, so that takes us to item 11. It's authorization to approve a contract with the Associated Consulting Engineering for the design of chillers for the county campus, HVAC. Mark Krins, good morning.
Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. So, I engaged with Associated Consulting Engineering to draft a proposal for the full design and technical assistance during construction for the chiller replacement project. The cost of the proposal fee is $135,700. State's attorney has, office has reviewed and approved the proposal, so I'm requesting commission authorization to approve the proposed contract with Associated Consulting Engineering for full design and technical assistance for the chiller replacement project. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mark? You know, this is a topic we've had before us in the past, or we're familiar. I at least now would know what a chiller is, which I can say at one point in my life I did not know. So, all right, if there aren't any questions or comments?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, takes us to item 12, authorization to approve a contract amendment with Summit Food for Jail Meals. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning. Go through the maze. Mike Mattson, the mayor of County Jail. In front of you today, we need to renew our contract with our food service vendor. It's a little bit different this year. We're going to a sliding scale, and we're going to an inmate worker-free kitchen. We noted these, the increase in costs in our 2021 budget proposal. We're just at the point where I think it's more beneficial to us to have an inmate-free kitchen. It's getting harder and harder to find sentenced inmates that qualify to work in there. We just don't have those individuals in the jail.
Other questions for Warden Mattson?
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to authorize the state's attorney to sign two agreements for Indian Child Welfare Act Qualified Expert Witness Services. Drew, good morning.
Since people are waiting in the hallway, it's always kind of like a surprise, like, oh, who's coming?
Morning, Commissioners. Drew DeGrove from the state's attorney's office. State's attorney is seeking your permission or authorization, excuse me, to sign two contracts. One is with the state or Department of Social Services in regards to qualified expert witnesses on cases involving the Indian Child Welfare Act. The total contract is $113,736. And in turn, the county, excuse me, the state's attorney is seeking permission to enter a contract with Luke Yellowrobe for his expert witness services. This is an expense-neutral contract for the county on both ends. The state pays for the expert witness fees, and we in turn pay the expert witness. Any questions?
No questions for Drew? I know we do this annually.
Correct. Move, approve, second.
I'm going to need two separate motions. So, the first one would be to approve the contract between Minnehaha County State's Attorney and the State Department of Social Services to provide funds to acquire Indian Child Welfare Act Expert Witness Services.
That would be my motion.
Thank you. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Yeah, thank you. All right, that takes us to item 14, which is an authorization to sign a resolution to delete a bridge from the National Bridge Inventory System. DJ Boothie?
He's here.
Is DJ here in person? Does anybody know? I think we'll go find him.
He was coming.
Madam Chair, inasmuch as I can talk about anything, you know, when I first saw this, I wondered, and of course, it became immediately clear when we were talking about doing away with the bridge that is no longer there because it's been replaced by culverts. You know, there's also the length of the span that makes it one of our issues, but in this case, it was well explained in the memo.
Good morning, DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Howie Superintendent. Sorry, apologize. The audio just went out in the other room, and so, we didn't know that I was up yet. So, this first item is to authorize the chairperson to sign resolution to delete a bridge from the NBIS. This summer, we replaced a bridge with a box culvert. The box culvert is... Box culvert.
Stop saying box culvert.
The box culvert has the distance from end to end as you travel down the roadway is less than 20 feet, and that's how this actually defines a structure. And so, because it doesn't qualify as a structure anymore, then we remove it from the NBIS, the National Bridge Inventory System. Then, it no longer qualifies for bridge funding, which is certainly okay because it's no longer a bridge. So, I ask for your consideration of that item in authorizing the chairperson to sign the resolution.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions for DJ?
I was trying to see how much time.
Roll call vote. I was waiting for Commissioner Barth to want to say box culvert, just to see what would happen. So, roll call vote, please. Sorry.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is item 15, which is to consider an authorization to sign a resolution which establishes legal load limits on structures.
Commissioners, currently, we're underway on our bridge inspections for 2020. The bridge inspector identified a bridge about 10 days ago that requires a reduced loading. It was a previously posted bridge for reduced load, but he's just reducing it a little bit farther, down to, what, 75% of the capacity of that structure. There are some structural issues. There's a major crack in the east back wall on the abutment, and some scour underneath one of the abutments. And so, that's resulting in a reduction of the load limit posting. In addition to that, this resolution removes five structures from the posting of the structures because we've replaced five structures this year. And so, those are coming off of the legal load limit reduction list. So, with that, I request your approval of the resolution which establishes legal load limits on structures. And the last page of the memo has a map showing where the 19 posted bridges are in the county.
Questions for DJ? Commissioner Hiber, sorry.
DJ, do you know, off the top of your head, how many bridges we have removed from this list of load limits because of replacements since you've started? Because I would assume there's been a number that have been removed.
I don't know that exact number, the number that has been removed. I think that, you know, when I started, we maybe had 29 or something like that, and we started removing bridges from replacements. And then, the inspection standards changed, and so, we increased the number quite a bit. We were well over 30, and so, now we're down to 19.
That's good. Thank you for your comments.
I think we average about three structures per year. Some are more that come off that. So, some years, we have more like this year, and then some years, we have just maybe two.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 14, which is an authorization to sign a resolution to delete a bridge from the National Bridge Inventory System. DJ Boothie?
He's here.
Is DJ here in person? Does anybody know? I think we'll go find him.
He was coming.
Madam Chair, inasmuch as I can talk about anything, you know, when I first saw this, I wondered, and of course, it became immediately clear when we were talking about doing away with the bridge that is no longer there because it's been replaced by culverts. You know, there's also the length of the span that makes it one of our issues, but in this case, it was well explained in the memo.
Good morning, DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Howie Superintendent. Sorry, apologize. The audio just went out in the other room, and so, we didn't know that I was up yet. So, this first item is to authorize the chairperson to sign resolution to delete a bridge from the NBIS. This summer, we replaced a bridge with a box culvert. The box culvert is... Box culvert.
Stop saying box culvert.
The box culvert has the distance from end to end as you travel down the roadway is less than 20 feet, and that's how this actually defines a structure. And so, because it doesn't qualify as a structure anymore, then we remove it from the NBIS, the National Bridge Inventory System. Then, it no longer qualifies for bridge funding, which is certainly okay because it's no longer a bridge. So, I ask for your consideration of that item in authorizing the chairperson to sign the resolution.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions for DJ?
I was trying to see how much time.
Roll call vote. I was waiting for Commissioner Barth to want to say box culvert, just to see what would happen. So, roll call vote, please. Sorry.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. That takes us to liaison reports. Liaison reports today? Anybody? Commissioner Hiber?
Quickly, we did meet this morning, the JDC Facilities meeting that's looking at changes to the JDC building, just the same as the Highway and the Administration Building. So, we had a short meeting this morning just to discuss some of the issues that are on the table. And then, I also met with the Treasurer's Office this morning and just brought forward a few more ideas. If you were downstairs at all, you might notice that the Plexiglas dividers, we have shortened their length from four feet to two feet, giving more space in the hallway for people to social distance. And so, I told the Treasurer, she wants to work with Facilities to try to put more people in that south hallway portion that she can traffic to Facilities, and all that may work is a little more flexibility. Also, that we had had some signage developed that would direct people with, who are elderly or have limited physical, limited physical abilities, that they could go directly to line 12 instead of standing in line. We also recognize with the curvature of the building, it's sometimes difficult to see from the end of the hallway cleared onto one. And so, Facilities is going to be putting in a speaker. IT has come up with a way to put an icon on the Treasurer's Office screens. When they complete their work with a customer, they can push that icon, and a speaker will automatically say, "Window 3 is open." And so, people know to come down without having to send somebody out to say, "Hey, I got an open spot down here." As I mentioned last week, that vehicle license renewal kiosk, it's not, didn't come last week, so we're hoping still soon.
Quickly, we did meet this morning, the JDC facilities meeting that's looking at changes to the JDC building, just the same as the Highway and the Administration Building. So we had a short meeting this morning just to discuss some of the issues that are on the table. And then I also met with the Treasurer's Office this morning and just brought forward a few more ideas. If you were downstairs at all, you might notice that the Plexiglas dividers, we have shortened their length from four feet to two feet, giving more space in the hallway for people to social distance. And so I told the Treasurer, she wants to work with facilities to try to put more people in that south hallway portion that she can talk to facilities on how that may work, gives her a little more flexibility. Also that we had, had some signage developed that would direct people with, who are elderly or have limited physical, limited physical abilities, that they could go directly to line 12 instead of standing in line. We also recognize with the curvature of the building, it's sometimes difficult to see from the end of the hallway, clear down to one. And so facilities is going to be putting in a speaker. IT has come up with a way to put an icon on the Treasurer's Office screens. When they complete their work with a, with a customer, they can push that icon, and a speaker will automatically say, window three is open. And so people know to come down without having to send somebody out to say, hey, I got an open spot down here. As I mentioned last week, that vehicle license renewal kiosk, it's not, didn't come last week, so we're hoping still soon. It's been wired, and it's ready to go in as soon as it comes. And then we also just, again, said, you know, if she decides that she would like to open that office before 8 o'clock, that she should talk with the commission office and security and facilities, so we could help make that go forward. And so I'd say we had a good meeting this morning and some good ideas. One more we added was, we've given her the authority to, if she would like to overhire on one tax and licensed technician, that she could. And so we discussed that possibility. And those decisions are still up to her, but the commission continues to try to work with the Treasurer's Office to try to make things better for us.
Thank you. It's been an ongoing conversation, and so I appreciate you visiting with the Treasurer again this morning. Any other liaison reports this morning?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Karski.
Two things. Hy-Vee on 49th and Louise yesterday, the line for the kiosk, there's probably about a dozen people in it. So it is being used, and it looked like it was going quite well. So we're getting through quickly, but people are finding them and using them. So I would thank the people that do, because it is a great way to find one close to your work or your neighborhood to get that done. Last Wednesday, the board of the, what we've been referring to as Community Triage Center, we're going to start referring it to as Link now. So we met as a board. We signed the lease for the city annex for that property to come under the control over, of the Link. And we also did a lot of budget work. We're working on funding sources outside of the county and the city and the hospitals. And we're really reaching out to the community and through the Development Foundation, the...
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation. Thank you. For people that have a place in their heart for that type of work, that they can donate to that. And there is a fund set up right now that money is going through. So things are moving forward. You're going to see more and more. And I know it's been a long time, but good things come to those who wait.
Really exciting to see that project come to fruition. Lots and lots of people, a lot of hard work. Commissioner Barth.
I want to ask Dean two questions. One, does Link, is Link an acronym for anything? And two, donations to it would be tax deductible, right?
Link is not an acronym, and correct. Donations are tax deductible. It is a 501(c)(3) set up that way. But no, we were looking for, and we talked about naming, you know, just what are the, trying to find that perfect word that describes and keep it short, you know? Because what the triage is really meant to do is get people connected or linked to those services that they need. So we figured Link fit the bill perfectly.
We should probably find a way to publish the address of where to send the contributions.
That would be good, yeah. Community Foundation.
All right, we can get that information out. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? I would just note that, and we talked last week about the governor's announcement about the money that was allocated under the CARES Act to Minnehaha County for COVID-related expenses. The commission office, and kudos to Carol in particular, and the sheriff have been really working hard to go through expenses that we've had. And it is quite amazing to see how many COVID-related expenses that we have had. And so Carol continues to work on that, and there'll be further reporting out on that, so.
I'm studying that list, too.
Thank you. The governor has set up a really good website. There's a lot of information on it, but just like any other new law, there's always room for further clarifications. And we are seeking some clarifications on a few things as well. So, all right. If there are no other liaison reports, that will take us to new business. Any new business? Commissioner, or Carol?
I just wanted to clarify, especially for those people who are listening. We are having audio problems this morning. We had a little bit of work done yesterday, and we're not sure how much that impacted or not. So the very beginning of this tape was a lot of static, and maybe just a smidgen of a sound coming through. Now you can hear sound, but you're still getting some static behind there. So we're going to move exact into the training room, because we're going to allow them to keep working on things, and hopefully have it resolved by our technical budget meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Technology both makes our life work and makes our life uncomfortable sometimes. So we appreciate the people who are working on that. All right, new business? No new business other than that? Old business? Any old business? All right, hearing seeing none. I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So we will reconvene in next door in about five minutes. That works for folks.